Commissioner Lanier.
Hi, Commissioner Jones.
Hey, what's happening?
You know.
Let's do this. Let's make this happen. Let's go.
I can't wait till we're all back together, though. I said that multiple times today. So hopefully, we'll start planning for that in the next few weeks.
Let's go. Who wants to take some, who wants to take some, uh, some idea or put up some ideas of how long the time is going to be?
Ooh, are we throwing down bets?
Look at John. Look at Leo Connor. He's, he's interested.
All right, Commissioners, it's seven o'clock. Uh, let's see, who am I missing? Commissioner Lanier? Uh, Joel, do you see her?
I do not at the moment.
Okay.
I don't have any texts from either.
Okay. All right. Well, I anticipate she'll be joining us. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Let's see, is that, let's see. There's Phil. I have two screens going, so I just gotta flick back and forth. All right, we'll go ahead and get started then, uh, this evening. And I anticipate Commissioner Lanier will be joining us. So I'll call this meeting to order, and we'll start with a moment of silence, and then pledge of allegiance, and then we'll go to roll call. Uh, so if you join me for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now, if you join me for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, let me see here. All right, next, we will go to roll calls. I'll turn to our city clerk.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Present.
Commissioner Isasi.
Here.
Commissioner Repart.
Here.
Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Jones.
Present.
I'm here.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes.
And we'll get Commissioner Lanier when she joins.
Okay, and Joel, can you just text her, make sure she's not having any technical problems?
I will.
Thank you.
I'll just text her right now, too, Joel.
Great. Thank you. All right, next that will take us to, um, before I introduce Griselda, I just want to walk through the agenda tonight. Uh, first opportunity for public comment, uh, I'll open up in just a moment, is on agenda items. So these are items that we voted on earlier today, uh, that are in our agenda. So for our public comment period, we have a number of rules that we ask you to respect. One, we ask you to share that you, we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in. We'll give you up to three minutes to speak. The first opportunity for public comment, uh, we ask that you be specific about what agenda item you are referring to. We do have two scheduled public hearings tonight. Um, one is on our, uh, established property taxes and proposed fiscal year 2022 budget. So that will come a little bit later in the agenda. Uh, and then we have, uh, City Commission is here to hear appeals related to the Uptown Business Improvement District Special Assessment Rule, uh, 8758. So if you're, you're, wanna be heard tonight on that item, I'm gonna ask you to hold put till we get to that. And then the last opportunity for public comment. Uh, so if you want to give public comment, you can call in at 4563000 or 311. Uh, you can hit one and then hit, um, one for the first item. For agenda items, there's Commissioner Lanier. Hi, Commissioner. Uh, hit number two for, uh, the budget, number three for the uptown special assessment, and, uh, number five for all other public comments, which is at our, at the end of our meeting tonight. Um, so again, we'll, we'll put up a reminder when we get to public comments, but I'm gonna ask everyone to, uh, make sure that you're doing your best to follow our rules when it comes to public comment. We ask you to refrain from swearing, name-calling, or making any derogatory comments related to someone's race, religion, or nation of origin. We really want to make sure that regardless of your opinion or idea, uh, if you agree with somebody's opinion or idea or not, um, that this is a safe place where people feel like they can be heard. Uh, so with that, I will turn to, uh, Griselda. Griselda Strata is with us tonight, uh, to assist with any translation services. And then after Griselda is done, I'll turn to the first opportunity for public comment on agenda items. Griselda.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. My name is Griselda, and it's a pleasure to be here to assist our callers for Spanish interpretation during the public comments, um, period of this evening. If you'd like to comment in this evening, please, um, there'll be some opportunities to do that. Call 311 or 616-4563000, press one, um, and then press the appropriate number for the item that you wish to speak to. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Griselda. Es un placer estar aquí para asistir a nuestros llamados con interpretación en español durante los periodos de comentario público de esta noche. Si usted desea hacer comentarios esta noche, por favor, llame al 311 o al 616-4563000 y presione el número uno y luego voy a permitir el número que requiere para el tema que usted quiere hablar. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so that will take us to our first opportunity for public comment. And again, this is public comment specific to agenda items that we're voting on tonight. Uh, so I will turn to Daniel to see if we have anyone in the queue.
Here comes the first caller, Mayor.
Thank you, Daniel.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item you wish to speak to. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
My name is Edgar Jimenez. I'm from Grand Rapids, Michigan, and I'm here to speak about the, uh, budget proposal for the, um, city for the fiscal year.
Sir, this is, this is not the appropriate time.
Go ahead.
This is not the appropriate time for the budget comments. If you dial 311, press one, and then option two, you'll be able to speak on the budget at that time.
Okay, now, what is, what is this phone call for? What is?
This is, this is for agenda items that are being voted on tonight that have, were voted on in committee meetings this morning. So any items you see under the committee, the standing committees, those items would be what you could speak on at this portion. But the budget, uh, you'll call back 311, press option one, and then option two.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item you wish to speak on. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
My name is Patrick Barnes. I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and I'm a resident of the West Side, one block south of Fulton on Hobie Street. And I'm actually petitioning to vote against, for you all to vote against and remove the consent agenda resolution 124 that would create an on-street social district, um, from the agenda, from the budget, from the proposal, all of it. I believe that, uh, this is, this quote is very relevant. Ethics is knowing the difference between what you have a right to do and knowing what is right to do. Now, Supreme Court Justice, uh, Potter Stewart. That, I'm gonna go over a couple reasons why I think this is a bad idea for everyone. The location, it's close to parks, it's close to the zoo, it's close to GBS. You housing an auto shop, like, uh, the two, excuse me, the two restaurants in question and the area in question that they are looking at creating a putt-putts and Joey, Johnny, or Joey's there. And they, um, they are located near this, all of these major intersections where people are coming and going, a school, two highway entrances, and a market. Uh, then we jump into deeper issues like alcohol and pedestrians and drivers and the dangers that it causes. Michigan, 15.1% of the, uh, traffic fatalities are pedestrians. And that's, there's only 20 states with higher numbers than that in the, in the whole country. Then when you take the amount of those fatalities and you increase, uh, when you add alcohol to the situation, almost half 47% of crash, 47% crashes that resulted in a pedestrian death involved alcohol for the driver and/or the pedestrian. One in every three fatal pedestrian crashes involved a pedestrian with blood alcohol concentrated, point or eight or more. 17% involved in a driver with blood alcohol concentrated. So we've got an increase in pedestrian deaths. And these fatalities happen, increased dramatically during the times of business where this operations would be opening and when they would use that. Uh, there are the age groups that they affect the most are the age groups that would be frequenting these places, and these are pedestrians. These are not even just the people who could be affected by alcoholism or the dangers of alcohol itself. Then you go into what happens when you increase associations between alcohol establishment density and violent crime. And these are numbers from the CDC, uh, and the NHTSA. The increase of assault goes up 4.3%. The increase of, for, um, in total, for on-premise establishments, 3.8%. Then you've got what excessive drinking does to the economy. Two of every five dollars spent on alcohol are paid by the government. That means that this year, this year, we paid in Michigan, we paid $8 billion, $161 million, $700,000 on excessive drinking. That's $862 per person, per citizen in the state. That is my loss. Now, all of those things considered, we've got.
That's three minutes, caller. Thank you, caller. That's three minutes. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live and the agenda item you wish to speak on. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Andra. I live in the third ward of Grand Rapids. I'm calling to vote no on the GRPD proposed budget for the.
Ma'am, ma'am, that is.
Let Daniel explain here a minute.
Thanks, Joel. And, and I'll just remind, uh, viewers that right now, we're taking public comment on agenda items. Um, so these are, these are items that we're voting on. So if you want to be heard on the proposed budget, you can hit, uh, number one. You call in 4563000 or 311, hit number one, and then number two. All right, Daniel, do we have others in the queue want to be heard on agenda items?
Yes, we do. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item you wish to speak on. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Persman. I live in Plainfield Township. I'm calling about, uh, I, the agenda item number three, actually, under that. Um, item two, on defunding the police department. First of all, I want to address Commissioner Yasi. I thought your comment at the last meeting absolutely abhorrent.
Are you?
Talking about the budget.
Yeah, this is not, right. Budget, public comment, this is.
Item number two on your agenda.
But those are, um, in which committee?
It's under communications and petitions. That was a last-minute add to the agenda.
Oh, that's not something that they're voting on? A petition in communication isn't voted on by the City Commission?
That's the worst. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Here comes the next caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item you wish to speak on. Again, please note that if you're calling to speak on the budget, you can press 311, press option one, and then option two. And at that time, you'll be able to speak on the budget. If you still wish to speak on agenda items, go ahead. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Hammel. I live in the first ward, and I'm a board member of J.BAN, uh, Stranville area neighbors. And, uh, we are not in favor of this resolution. Anytime when you get people walking up and down the streets with liquor, especially on a busy street like Fulton, it's just not a good idea. And I notice that there are four houses in the district. I'm sure they're not too happy about people going to be wandering or up and down in front of their house with liquor. And Ted's Auto is also in this area. He probably won't appreciate it either. And McDonald's is in this area, which is a family-friendly place, is going to have people sitting, drinking right out in front of it. That is really not a good idea. So I urge you to vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item you wish to speak on. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Johnny Brand. I have a written, uh, business in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and the defunding, which you called in about before.
Mr. Brand, this is for agenda items. That topic is the second portion of public comment. So, yeah, if you call 311 and press one and then option two, then you'll be able to speak on that, okay?
You mean, call it now?
Yeah, you can call and get in the queue right now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live and the agenda item you wish to speak on. Please note, this is not for budget discussion. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, Daniel. It's nice to hear you're back.
Hi, Jimmy. Go ahead. Your time started.
I'm with, uh, the lady who's a part of the John Boss group, and the gentleman opposing the part of the budget that has to do with the social, I guess, is it op care and drinking? Downtown needs more shops for people to shop at. There's enough drinking dispensaries, good job, John O'Connor, and distilleries in the city. Our community wants to go downtown and not just get drunk and, uh, walk around with glasses. We want to walk around with our children and our families. Everyone to shop. I think a good place, which was started years ago, was where the police station is. That was gonna be a mall. We need to move the police outside of the city, and we need to put that mall back there. This is the time, and timing is critical. It's the most important thing. We got enough drinking. People have been killed downtown as a result of drinking and driving. Anyways, with that, I pass.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item you wish to speak on. Please remember that budget discussion will be the next portion of public comment. Your time starts now.
My name is Sean Rabru. I live in Rockford, Michigan. I work in downtown Grand Rapids with the United States Postal Service. I'd like to speak about defunding the police.
Sir, this is the, this is the incorrect portion of public comment for that. If you call.
When does that come?
Sure, if you call 311, press one, and then select option two, then you'll be put in the queue to speak upon the budget, okay?
I don't want to speak about the budget.
Well, that's, that's a portion of the budget. Or you can press, you can dial 311, press option one, and then option five, and you'll have three minutes to speak about whatever topic you wish to.
Okay. Please don't defend the police. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more callers, Mayor.
Thank you, Daniel. Um, and, and City Clerk, hopefully, we'll all be back together face-to-face soon. Uh, but until then, I wonder if, uh, while we continue to meet virtually, if maybe we could have a slide-up with the different public hearings with, uh, you know, a little bit more direction that people can see on when there's different public hearings and based on what. So we can talk about that afterwards, but.
Yep, that's possible.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll close that opportunity for public comment, uh, and that will move us to approval of the minutes. And we have two, uh, meetings that we've had. Uh, one was our special meeting on May 11th at 1:00. And the other one was our special meeting on May 11th at 7:00 PM. Can I get a motion for approval of the minutes?
Move.
Support.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, CNN, uh, City Clerk, can you call the vote?
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Hi.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. Thank you. Next, that will take us to petitions and communications.
The first one is communications, two of them received expressing support for the proposed fiscal year 2022 city budget.
That is received and filed.
Communications, 61 of them urging the City Commission to vote no on the proposed budget and defund the police department.
That is received and filed.
And commu- communications, six of them received urging the City Commission not to defund the police department.
And that is received and filed. Next, that will take us through to reports of city officers.
Um, the first one is Comptroller's Report for the period of April 28, 2021, through May 4, 2021, in the amount of $3,841,171.37.
That is received and filed.
And the Treasurer's Report for the period of April 13, 2021, through April 26, 2021.
And that is also received and filed. Next, that will take us to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda are items that we talked about and voted on earlier today in one of our standing committee meetings where there was unanimous vote. So tonight, we will adopt those items with one voice vote. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
So move.
Support.
Thank you. Moved and supported. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, City Clerk, you want to call the vote?
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Hi.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, next, that will take us to items removed from consent. And we have one item tonight, and it's a resolution. City Clerk, you want me to read this?
I got it. Um, resolution confirming Mayor Bliss's appointment of Melinda Isasi to the Civil Service Board.
All right, can I get a motion?
So move.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Uh, Commissioner Repart, you're on our appointments committee. You want to, uh, talk about this one? Oh, maybe not. I think we just lost him, or was that me? Can you all see me? Oh, there.
Oh, I'm here.
Okay.
Am I back?
Yeah, you're back.
So the only reason why this is off-consent is because, uh, Commissioner Isasi abstained from voting for herself, so, um, but she's served on civil service before, uh, before she was a commissioner, and, um, it will be taking the open space there for your appointment.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Repart. So, um, I, I'll use this opportunity to thank Commissioner Lanier for serving on, uh, our Civil Service Board over the last several years. This is a board that, uh, many Commissioners have rotated through, uh, before Commissioner Lanier. Commissioner Kelly served, and then Commissioner White. Uh, and so I, I think it's a great time for, as she finishes up, finishes up her term for, uh, Commissioner Isasi to step in and then to have her support with anything that needs to be transitioned on that body. So Commissioner Lanier, thank you for your service. Uh, and, uh, Commissioner Isasi, thank you for your willingness to serve again, uh, not as a resident, but as a Commissioner on this board. Um, Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Lanier?
I'll just quickly say, I know, um, Commissioner Isasi and I served on civil service, um, before she became a Commissioner, and I know she will do an amazing job on civil service. So congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We, um, thank you, Mayor. We, we just went back and forth this meeting in the morning. We just wanted to do it all above the board, and so that's, this is the only reason that it's removed from consent. So thanks.
Yep, you're welcome. Absolutely. And, and if I remember correctly, Commissioner Lanier, I think Commissioner Kelly gave you a gift for taking the spot for her. Or at least she was eager to, to transition.
To give it up, right.
So again, thank you for your years of service. I appreciate that. Um, all right, City Clerk, you want to go ahead and call the vote?
Yeah, Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Hi.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi.
Abstaining.
And Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. Thank you. All right, next, that will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have two ordinances before us tonight.
The first one is the ordinance amending section one of the Budget Ordinance 2020-15 for fiscal year 2021, amendment number 14.
So move.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner O'Connor, from our fiscal committee, you want to tell us about this?
Thank you, Mayor. Just three items on, uh, on this tonight. Uh, first one is just, uh, appropriating some of our water bonds to pay for the replacement of a switchgear at the cost of $2.9 million. Uh, that helps, uh, make sure that our Lake Michigan filtration plant can deliver us clean, safe water. Uh, second item is the alignment of some funds between our major and local streets funds. And our final item is to, uh, appropriate, uh, $650,000 from the fees we receive for the pay-as-you-throw services for our, uh, local refuse services. Uh, no, uh, use of contingent balance.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, we'll turn to the City Clerk for a revote.
Commissioner Lanier.
Hi.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Eric, Commissioner.
Yes, yeah.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. And Commissioners, can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
So move.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. City Clerk, will you call the vote?
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Hi.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, next up will be our second ordinance tonight to be adopted.
Yes, and I'll need a vote for immediate consideration on this before we get a motion to approve.
Okay, can I get-
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I get a motion for immediate consideration?
So move.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. City Clerk, you want to call the vote?
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Hi.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. All right, you want to read the ordinance?
Yep, so this is a series ordinance authorizing the issuance of sanitary sewer system revenue refunding bonds, Series 2021.
All right, can I get a motion?
So move.
All right, moved. Thank you. Commissioner Moody, you want to tell us about this one?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this ordinance will authorize the issuance of sales of more than one series of sanitary sewer systems revenue refunding bonds for which the principles and the interest will be payable from the sanitary sewer systems revenue. The series specifies that the terms of the bonds issued will not exceed 23 years. The refund bonds do not require referendum within the period.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions on this item? All right, CNN. City Clerk, you want to call for the vote?
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Hi.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
And Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. And Commissioners, can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
So move.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. City Clerk, you want to call the vote?
Yep. Commissioner Isasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Repart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier.
Hi.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. Thank you. All right, we don't have any City Commission resolutions tonight, so that will take us to our scheduled public hearings. Again, we have two scheduled public hearings tonight. The very first one is on our budget. The second one is on any appeals for the Uptown Business Improvement District Special Assessment Rule. So if you want to be heard on the budget, you can call 456-3000, or 311, hit number one, and then number two. If you want to be heard on the Uptown Bid Special Assessment, you can call 456-3000, or 311, hit number one, and then number three. So for this first public hearing, it's a public hearing establishing property taxes and the proposed fiscal year 2022 budget. Before opening this up, I'll just turn this over to our CFO, Ms. Clarence, to see if she wants to add anything before we open it up for comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a brief slideshow to show the public, just so they're aware of the overview of the budget as well as what's involved with the millage rate, so go ahead and do that. Okay, so this is, you know, we're going to open up the public hearing in a minute for the fiscal year 2022 fiscal plan. So the public is aware, this has been a fiscal plan that's been shaped around, oops, I'm sorry. I'm sharing the wrong screen. It flew. Let's try that again. Lou, do you have it? It seems to be flipped out.
I can share it. City Clerk, would you make me the presenter?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, one second.
Thank you. I can get going, though. With our fiscal plan, it's been shaped around priorities set by our City Commission. The budget process is actually begins in the fall and it runs throughout the year as we hone in on, you know, what the priorities are and how we make it work with our revenue expectations. So as you can see, this is a slide of the budget journey. It shows, it kicks off with our performance management report in the fall. We have a commission prioritization workshop and as well as a fiscal year review at the end of October, so we can see how the past year's performance was. We had an exceptional year this year, a lot of fiscal challenges, so I did do an extra update with the City Commission and the public around December 15th, where we talked about how we were performing year-to-date with all the uncertainty as well as what budget adjustments were necessary at that time. We returned in February with another financial update as well as performance management update. And then we moved into the actual budget process with the commission. We kicked it off on April 27. The budget became available on our website, as well as we went through a series of work sessions with the commission. And that also included a budget town poll on May 6th, where the mayor and the city manager got to answer questions directly posed by the public on the budget. This morning was our last work session, where the commission, you know, took that time for follow-up discussion. And right now, now we open it up for direct public comment through our public hearing process. On Thursday, we're having a special commission meeting at 9:00 AM, where the commission will be presented with the proposed ordinance to adopt the budget as well as the property tax millage rates for 2021. So I talked about setting our focus areas. These were the six focus areas set this year by the commission. And, you know, under the guise of our strategic plan, it really helped us shape our decisions as well as while we were maintaining service, what things to focus on as we received the relief funds or could leverage our resources. So that included housing and homelessness, of course, dealing with the COVID pandemic, and coming out, making sure we're well-positioned for economic recovery. We want to make sure we're providing equitable funding. We've talked about the third ward in neighborhoods of focus. Public safety reform out of this was born, the working on the police department's strategic plan. And then we have crime prevention, violence reduction, very important. And of course, fiscal sustainability, because, as you know, we have a revenue problem as a result of the pandemic, which we'll talk more about in a minute. So, my next slide. So moving into the financial overview, I've mentioned the coronavirus impacts on our revenue. We did get some relief dollars through the federal government, state, as well as our partners at the county. So we had the CARES Act, where we received just over $20 million. And this really was important because it helped us enable providing city services even in a lockdown state. And then now we're looking at qualified uses for the American Rescue Plan Act, which will receive about $92.3 million over the next two years, which we'll have to spend by the end of the year of 2024. But again, we're going to be shaping a plan, which will include core sustaining current services. So with all these things in play, we built a continuation budget, which simply means we are maintaining our operating levels. And the only increases you really see across the budget is what we're contractually obligated to do. This could be something like debt service or a third-party obligation, where we've already entered into the agreement where we're legally or contractually obligated to adhere to. So the total appropriation request is just under $546 million, and the general fund is going to be appropriated around $156 million. So the next slide, we'll get into the property tax. We do have, I mentioned a slight rollback in our, or a slight reduction in our city property tax, but an overall increase. And we'll talk about that in a minute, but for those who are not aware, I thought I'd do a slide on what is headly. You'll hear that mentioned across this commission every once in a while when we get into talking about property taxes. But for the public's benefit, I thought we'd throw a slide on here to explain what exactly we mean when we're talking about a headly rollback. That simply means we're never going to increase, as taxable value increases, the millage decreases. So we're never going to increase taxes more than the previous year's taxes plus inflation. Because we've had rising taxable values, this is our sixth consecutive year of having a rollback or a millage reduction. And we track that over time on that table on the right, so you can see, under our taxing authority, what we actually have. We actually are going to tax because of this headly rollback. So this isn't a negative thing. It's evidence of a healthy real estate market. We have low inflation right now. And so it's good things, but, you know, to give you an example of how that works with the new parks millage we have coming on in 2019 that was voted in at 1.25 mils. But applying this millage reduction fraction through the headly, we're going to multiply that by the reduction factor, and that's how you get the millage you'll see on your property tax bill. So knowing that I can't, I have that millage reduction factor to take into account every year because we've had this increase in taxable value, and that is, of course, eliminating what we can tax plus inflation. You'll see for 2021, we took last year's allowable mils, multiply it by this year's millage reduction factor, and that's how we get to the 1.2158 mils. Next slide. So this is just a table of overall what your taxes will look like on your tax bill for 2021. You'll see the overall increase of 0.1880 mils. At the bottom there is just a breakout of the general operating, general capital, and library operating to show that for the city, operating portion is actually a reduction. But that overall increase largely built, largely impacted by that new millage coming onboard. So moving on to the other portion of this public hearing, so that's the, we just talked about the property taxes. Now we're moving on to the budget. So it's a continuation budget. It's a lot of the over $500 million, and there's a lot to unpack in a very short presentation, but overall, here's what's going on. We have over $25 million of investments. We identified that involve equity last year. That was around $15 million. So again, trying to push more towards focus on equity at the city. We have over $96 million in capital investments, and $26 million of this is invested in neighborhoods of focus. Again, we're leveraging the ARPA funds, very focused on housing homelessness, economic development, and making plans with that new parks millage that's coming onboard. So all good things. We've also mentioned this in our work sessions when we talked about public safety, but, you know, you'll see a decrease in the police department's share of the general fund going from 38.6% down to 35.8%. So it's pulling resources to other areas of the budget, which you'll see when you open up the fiscal plan. To give the public an overall feel of what a continuation budget means, and also how we've dealt through different economic periods over the past 20 years. You'll see in 2002, our staffing was at 1,959 permanent employees. Currently, we're at 1,642 permanent employees. That yellow line is basically a ratio of staffing to city population. So in the past 20 years, you can see we're operating at about 82% of the capacity of what we had in 20 years ago. And what this means, it's a pretty significant thing to look at because you consider the program expansions and the new programs that have come onboard. We're basically doing more with less staffing. And it is interesting to see year to year, both that change in staffing largely driven by that great recession. The city was largely impacted between 2009, and you'll see another dip through 13, and 13 and 14. So, and then a slow build back. Been very conservative about we've added back. And then if you look at going from 2021 to 22, we're sustaining our current level of staffing with this continuation budget model in mind. This is the overall outlook of our general fund. It's, you know, if you look at that yellow line, you'll see our surplus and deficits largely impacted by the relief dollars we received, as I said, in fiscal year 20, about 11 million of that relief money did directly hit the general fund. So that $2.8 million surpluses, you know, that's because we've received relief money to sustain current level of services. But as we go from 22, 21 and 22, you'll see that the American Rescue Plan comes into play, gives us some surplus. And then it quickly, you know, dissipates over time till we get out to fiscal year 2026, where our fund balance is now 3.9%. So going from 25.6% at the end of fiscal year 20 to below our policy level, 15% between 2025 and 26. We definitely have some structural issues that we're going to have to address over the next couple of years. I'm hoping we're conservative on our revenue estimates, and we'll see more of an economic recovery coming out of this year into '23 and '24. But for now, this is the handrail belt, and I will continue to adapt as we move along. So for the ARPA investments, this is the American Rescue Plan. Currently, this is not adjusted for the new guidance put out by the US Department of Treasury with the calculation of revenue replacement, things like that. But this is our original plan. Right now, we're planning on about $60.1 million going towards income tax recovery as our projected losses relative to our last full year, which was fiscal year 2019. So this is what we'll, at a minimum, will need to sustain level of services across funds that need income tax to support operations. We have investments for immediate recovery that include our master plan, housing practice lead, and special events, just to encourage that economic recovery, as well as our homeless outreach team and Network 180. Moving down, we have a post-budget process with the commission. We plan to kick off in June and work through the summer to define exactly how we want to put this, put these various initiatives to work. We have, for instance, an area of violence reduction, or, you know, creating an affordable housing supply. Two very important things that were noted by the commission that we should try to push on to make happen. And we plan on engaging in much discussion to figure out the most effective ways to put this money to work. You'll see the third column over is the fiscal year '23 through '25. When that second payment comes in next year for the American Rescue Plan, we'll begin talks of how to allocate that money based on what's going on at the time. But I anticipate there's about $43.8 million we'll need to allocate in some way. And again, we have to have this all expanded by the end of calendar year 2024, which is halfway through our fiscal year 2025. Originally, when we put together the budget, we had an estimate about $94 million we'd be receiving in ARPA funds. The US Department of Treasury informed us in our award that it's, the actual number's going to be- The US Department of Treasury informed us in our award that it's the actual number is going to be ninety two point three million. So. We we plan on moving forward with that. So to give an overview of some of the equity investments, this is just a long list of things. I was talking about twenty five million of direct investments. You know, the how the lead remediation of two point two million and. You know, again, the sidewalks, no assistance pilot, all opportunities where where we can, you know, raise equity. Into the decision making for each of these programs. Going on to our commission, our strategic plan area of investment for government excellence, things. To, you know, keep in mind that we did focus on the Michigan Indigenous Defense Fund seven hundred thousand. And, you know, you can see these other, the GBSU Police County Sponsored Hiring Model, which is part of their strategic plan, eighty six thousand dollars there. We can keep keep rolling, I guess, Lou. Economic prosperity and affordability. Again, we with this, we've been able to use heiress to leverage some external funding. We have the MLB E program, which is the micro local business enterprise. Enterprises, but you know, encouraging more growth locally there. We've talked about that in past commission meetings as well as. ARPA investments I've already discussed. Engaged in connected community is another one of our strategic focuses. Utilization of flash vote, you know, finding more creative ways to engage the community. Again, and creation of the community engagement framework, another important thing where we're using. External fun funding to leverage that as well. And health and environment, we've we've. Really beefed up our parks maintenance. You know, the forestry sustainability plan, that's two point seven million dollar investment there and and again, you know, lots of investment across across the board. Both with the general fund through the enterprises and and external sources. Mobility, we have the dash operations at two point four million. And then installment and more bike racks, twenty five thousand. And again, we already discussed the sidewalks, no assistance pilot, a hundred thousand. Then safe community. We, you know, the next slide, I believe, talks about the police department's strategic plan that they built this year, but we also. Have other initiatives in this safe community area, which involves many different departments. Including planning with the crime prevention through environmental design, Ted program of fifty four thousand. We launched cure violence with a hundred thousand dollar investment. And then leveraging external. Funding with our homeless outreach coordinator position that's at one hundred and twenty eight thousand. And then, as you know, we've talked about the ARPA investments. Again, safe community was one of the commission's focus areas, so. You'll see significant ARPA investment there that we'll talk about this summer. And then I I mentioned the police is the police strategic plan. You know, one thing that we did do some decoupling with moving some radio technicians. Out of the police department to allocate their function with the dispatch. Department as well as three non sworn positions that were bank hit in the police department. We moved those to make investments, have positions located for housing development. And led communications as well as neighborhoods. And then. We also discovered some efficiency savings, which which pulled down a lot of the the costs for the department. We're hiring a chief of staff and again, continuing to to build out the neighborhood policing model. This is just an overview by the strategic priority of our our level of investment in. In in capital, our ninety six million dollars and. You know, a lot of money across across the across the city going towards this. The largest category, for instance, for FY twenty two is in health and environment. And so the next steps towards budget adoption. So. On Thursday morning at nine AM at our special commission meeting, we'll have two. Two resolutions, one adopting the property tax mileage rate as well, the other one for the city budget. And that includes the adoption of the, we do a fiscal plan. Instead of just being a one where we vote on the appropriation for the FY twenty two. Spending plan, but also we always look forward with the way we do budget here at the city of Grand Rapids. So looking forward to. Fiscal year two thousand twenty six, so we can anticipate any any changes, things like that. And we know what's coming. Our total appropriation, though, for fiscal year twenty two is going to be just under five hundred and forty six million. The total general fund appropriation at one hundred and fifty six million and. Again, the use of those ARPA funds will be discussed this summer in a post-budget process. We plan to engage public. As we work through this with the city commission. And that is all.
Right. Thanks, Ms. Clarence. Thanks for that overview. Appreciate that. That kind of comprehensive layout of the budget that's before us. So commissioners, any questions or comments before I move to those who would like to be heard? All right, I'll turn to Daniel then. Daniel, do we have anyone in the queue?
Here comes the first caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
My name is Dana. I live in Grand Rapids. I have lots of issues with this budget, but I don't have enough time, so just gonna talk about one. You ask us to give the GRPD more time, that they need more time to transform, but transform to what? Like this institution has shown any signs of good faith in the past year since last being stonewalled on budget issues. They've shown us that they take pride in themselves in harming people and getting away with it. That accountability in GR when it comes to police is nonexistent, that the OPA and internal investigations are nothing but a sham imperformative. They're doing the same thing they've been doing and will likely continue, expecting a different outcome is insanity. We cannot even put together a people's budget to say, oh, take from here and to put here because we weren't giving that information. We asked for a line itemized GRPD budget for the entire year last year and did not receive it until February ninth of twenty twenty one. Commissioner Yefasi, I expected so much more from you. You are really bending to these institutions. Do better. Lanier, I really appreciate you listening to everyone's voices, even if you don't necessarily agree and continuing to uplift your constituents' voices. That's all we're asking for. Joe Jones, I see that you have your eyes set on some other positions. I hear you talking real pretty. I hear you trying to co-opt the language of activists out here doing the word work. But let me tell you, we noticed you. You don't just get to talk one way and still back these institutions and expect for us to vote for you. Moody Ruppart and especially O'Connor, I definitely have words for y'all, but three minutes is just not enough. Mayor Bliss, you have no backbone. You are a disappointment and will forever be. And Mark Washington, I wish you only worse. I wish you every major and minor inconvenience I can afford you. Where you just harm people in Grand Rapids and then try to hide your hands. Both you and Bliss say, oh, we we're going above and beyond. We didn't have to do this. Charter doesn't mandate having these conversations. Do y'all want a cookie? Then bake one. You're doing your job. Your job is to represent us in our interest, which includes listening to them. If that's too much for you, then you need to get a new job. You said that you're listening to stakeholders, but maybe a misunderstanding because I am a stakeholder. Am I not? You're listening to institutions. Be proactive. Send out emails notifying people of budget meetings and such so we can have an opportunity to be. Aware at the beginning of the entire process. I know that you have our email. Send out communication to those two thousand plus people that have emailed you about the budget and keep us informed. Y'all want to do what you want to do with our money and expect us to sit back and shut up, but we're not going to. You're going to have these problems until y'all start listening to community voices. So get used to it. I'm done.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is Jamie Reader. I'm a citizen of Grand Rapids. I'm calling to demand that you vote no on the proposed twenty twenty two fiscal year budget. Start the budget over this time with a participatory budgeting by the community. Participatory budgeting has proven effective in cities across the nation, for example, New York. It is unacceptable that the GRPD is receiving seven hundred thousand additional tax dollars while our schools and communities are underfunded. The safest communities are the ones with the most resources, not the most police. I'm urging you to fund education, community and youth programs, such as the Grow One Thousand Program. And adopt the Cure Violence Model and pay for these community resources out of the former police budget. In addition, I strongly believe that the Grand Rapids should adopt a crisis action response team. This team would respond to all nonviolent nine one one calls and could better serve our community by giving citizens the help that they need from trained professionals. Modeled after the Kahoots program in Oregon. Each team would contain a nurse or AMT and a crisis worker, a mental health professional who has several years of experience. I strongly believe that this program would provide a much needed service to our community in times of need. Again, I'm urging you to vote no on the twenty twenty two fiscal year budget. So you can serve and invest in our community by providing the citizens of Grand Rapids with the resources we need to grow and prosper. Thank you for your time.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Karen and I'm calling because. I think that the city of Grand Rapids needs to. That the commissioners need to vote no on this budget and start over again with a participatory budgeting process. I do not have much faith at all that that will happen. I listened to this morning's. Twenty of the full meeting. It was just really disheartening to hear the comments there. Mark Washington said it was remarkable that twenty million dollars was going to go to homelessness and housing. That's great, but fifty six million dollars is going to the GRPD. He also bragged about the fact that. The GRPD budget was reduced by three percent. But the GRPD is getting seven hundred thousand dollars more than they got last year. This is not what thousands of people who have emailed, written to you, called in and demonstrated. Have asked for. They've asked for defunding. This is not defunding. Multiple commissioners and city leaders at this morning's meeting said that they thought that all that needed to happen was. To give the GRPD some time in order to redo themselves, to fix themselves, I guess, reform themselves. I wonder if. That you would say, by the way, I think it's worth mentioning that two of them were commissioners, Commissioner Repart and Commissioner O'Connor, who have received money from the Grand Rapids Police Officers Association before. I think that is worth mentioning. And I wonder if the people who think that the GRPD just needs time. Would say that to the man who is repeatedly punched in the face by the cops. To the man who was knocked to the street with the wrong man and who was put in jail and missed his mother in law's funeral. To the activist, the black activist who are who have been for a year now targeted for harassment violently handled by the police. I I want to say would say to their face, oh, you know, that's I'm sorry that happened, but just, you know, give the GRPD some time. Time is not what's needed. The GRPD needs to be defunded. Money from that defunding can go to things like the Cure Violence Program that will actually be helpful to. Communities in the city. And I'm also tired of hearing commissioners who I think mean very well, but. Actually spend a lot of time saying, well, it's really upsetting to me what's happening, but I can't do anything about it. There seems to be this feeling that. You know, you couldn't vote no on this budget. No, you could. That would be a statement that would mean something to the many people who are asking you to defund. You are not helpless. You're not powerless. It's nice that you, you know, want parity and equity for the community. But that's what people have been asking for per se as far as the GRPD budget goes. They're asking for defunding and you can do something about it. And it doesn't have to be all these shenanigans with which happened last year.
That's three minutes, caller.
You can't vote for this.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
My name is Andrew Fishback. I live in Grand Rapids. I am calling on the commission today to reduce the budget of the Grand Rapids Police down to thirty two percent. And frankly, it is unjust. For so much of this city's money to go into what is supposed to be a force that handles problems. But honestly, as far as I can tell, only seems to be creating problems. And also. You know, I see all of these, don't defund the police billboards around, but do you know how many people I see living on the streets? That just tells me that this city has wildly wildly messed up priorities. We need to immediately start valuing life and people over property, which is something this city has passed backwards. And honestly, if it if it comes through, if it comes out of that, just. Let us choose what our money goes to. I know so many people in this city would. Go wild at the opportunity to not pay for a service that we don't like the police. So. Throw us a bone. Also, please stop targeting the Vice President of Justice for Black Lives. In what world does it make sense to arrest a man at gunpoint? For what noise ordinance violations, jaywalking, crowding a sidewalk? I mean, come on, you seem like the most pedantic charges that you can scrum up against somebody to threaten them into. Stopping what they're doing. It makes no sense to me. Defund the police.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Christina Keich and I live on the northeast side of Grand Rapids. I'm calling because. I think city officials should vote no on the proposed budget for Grand Rapids. The reason that I think so is because the budget was proposed without any input from our community. And I think that the process should be started over and let. The community kind of help participate in creating the budget.
Is that is that all, caller?
I think so, yeah.
Thank you. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Mina. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids. That makes me a stakeholder in this budget process. I am asking you to vote no on the budget to give the community time to review where our money is being spent. To turn this into a participatory budget process. I have reviewed some of the comments that were made by some of the commissioners earlier in your earlier meeting. One was there have been no changes to the budget requested. That was made by Mark Washington. That is not true. Also, we haven't been given enough time to review this budget. We were not given this nice. Format that your CFO put together until today. We could have been included in this process a lot sooner so that we all had a nice clean format to look at and understand this budget. So that we could make our comments on it. But it's also not true. We have asked, I have personally called in and asked you to literally just house people instead of shoving them around. I have called in to ask you to fund the mental health services. I have called in to ask you to fund harm reduction services. So you are flat out lying that no requests have been made. Not only that, you tried to say that you had a town hall where people could call in and talk about this budget. The phone lines were down during this town hall, so the community could not call in. Your constituents who you report to could not call in during that process. Another statement that was made, I don't know if I'm going to get through all of this. You usually cut me off. Was that the GRPD needs time to transform itself. Well, let me tell you something. Police in this country come from. A history of three sources. Police in this country come from a history of three sources. Our policing system is founded on slave catchers, the sheriff's system, which was put in place to push brown people off of this land so that white people could live here, period, and the COPS, which was the British system, where the constables protected the interests of the wealthy and upper class against the common people. Coming from this foundation, the roots and the soil are poisoned. We cannot reform when the foundation is bad. When the foundation is bad, we have to fully tear down the system and rebuild a new system that works in the way we need it to. We need to stop with war on drugs. We need to stop targeting the black community leaders. We need to have
That's three minutes.
Police system that works for us.
Thank you, caller. That's three minutes. Caller, you're on the line with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Zara Franco. I'm a citizen of the city of Grand Rapids. Vote no on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. We need to start the whole process over with a participatory budget with the community who you supposedly protect. This type of budgeting has proven to be effective in cities like New York and Oakland. The timeline that was given to review the length of the budget are not feasible for the full community participation. And adding on to that, the city says it listens to the community, but in reality, it's just listening to certain institutions, not the community. You should not be listening to lobbyists, but the whole community. It is not acceptable that the GRPD is receiving 700,000 more than they did last year when they have spent the last year and this year overpolicing minority people and communities. The GRPD has targeted the VP of Justice for Black Lives for almost a year. We do not want our tax dollars to be used for aggression towards black activists and leaders. Defund the GRPD to 32% of the city's budget and pay for Cure Violence out of the police budget, and invest in schools and youth programs instead. Give the overpolice community better resources. Don't give the cops more money. Thank you for your time.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Ally Bates. I'm the president of Justice for Black Lives. I'm calling today to demand that my city commissioners vote no on the city's budget proposal. Next week, we'll make one year since a great number of community members came together to demand that the city voted to defund GRPD to the mandate of 32%. Since then, we have called in to many commissioner meetings, sent over 1,000 emails, and protested all year round. And what has the city given us in return? False claims that they have been talking to community members, excuse to justify the fact that my vice president, my organization, has been targeted countless times, as well as many other peaceful protesters by the Grand Rapids Police Department. And now they're receiving more, they are receiving $700,000 more than they did last year. Not to mention the fact that commissioners said that we need to give GRPD time to get it together. Why don't you tell us the black and brown community members to have generational PTSD because of the GRPD? They don't need any more time. They have had all the time in the world. The time is now. Once again, I'm asking my city commissioners not only vote no on the budget proposal, but to also defund the GRPD to that mandate of 32% and pay for Cure Violence out of their own budget. During the past town halls, Mayor Bliss and Mark Washington have emphasized that community process is legal, but the fact that it's legal does not make it right or even equitable. We have, we have the right to have a say in where our tax dollars go and do a participatory budget. We are able to do that. And in fact, participatory budgeting has been proven to be effective in bigger cities such as New York and Oakland. If they can do that, then Grand Rapids can as well. Do the right thing. As commissioners, it's your job to represent us, not the ones who are just white with money. I yield my time.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Good evening. My name is Steve Bukerman. I live in Third Ward. I'm the founder and director of the Milbrook Community Bridge Works, which we founded over 20 years ago. First of all, I'd like to thank you for being a part of this great city. I'm making comments this evening regarding the discussion regarding of defunding the police department, and I think it would be very illuminating for city leadership, as well as anyone else who can hear this and might read the transcript, that Grand Rapids Police Department has been defunded over the decades. This started under the quote-unquote "leadership" of its manager Kirk Kimball, where the Grand Rapids Police Department budget was set by statute as a certain percentage of the general fund. Kirk Kimball reduced the size of the general fund by eliminating departments such as Parks and Rec, Water Department, and others, so that the piece of the pie remaining was much smaller. This, at the same time, when in 1995, Grand Rapids Police Department, our Grand Rapids Police Department, was authorized to be just over 400 officers, today, we're authorized for 297 with increased population and increased serious crime. From 2018 to 2020, homicides are up 600%. Non-fatal shootings up 200%. Victims of non-fatal shootings up 240%. Shootings in general up over 200%. Shootings that result in property damage up 313%. Shots fired called came up 220%. Altogether, shootings with property damage and shots fired collectively are up 462%. So far year-to-date, Grand Rapids Police Department has recovered 200 illegal firearms, all at the same time as average service response times are increasing dramatically, averaging 26 minutes around the wards of Grand Rapids in general. So crime is going up, population is growing, and the question of the reasonable citizen is to ask our elected and paid leadership, are you making decisions on behalf of the city based on fact or feelings? Because your actions certainly indicate that you are acting like seaweed in the water flowing with the currents of society, which are not based on facts, but definitely based on feelings. I would ask that you would take these considerations seriously and make the best decisions for your children and grandchildren to be a part of this great city of Grand Rapids going forward. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
My name is Padira. I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I believe we should vote no on the proposed budget because GRPD is receiving $700,000 more than they were last year, and all they have done with that money that they received last year was brutalize black activists. The city has bragged about listening to community stakeholders, but the only stakeholders they are listening to are big corporations and businesses, not individual residents. We need to defund the GRPD to 32% of the city's budget. The Grand Rapids Police Department has been targeting the Vice President of Justice for Black Lives for almost a year now. We do not want our tax dollars to continue to go towards a system who is only brutalizing the people that live within it. During
Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? Thank you. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Hi, this is Maggie Smith. I'm calling from the Third Ward, where I live in the city of Grand Rapids. I'm calling about the proposed fiscal plan. If the city of Grand Rapids wants to continue to be a city where black and brown people, especially queer or disabled, black and brown people are targeted by violence and oppressive impacts of white supremacy, then this budget is the perfect one for you to vote for. Despite thousands of people in the city of Grand Rapids reaching out directly to their elected officials to demand defunding of the GRPD throughout the last year, and despite continued and sustained outcry, including this past week when there were multiple events against the white supremacy in our city, the words "defunding" and "white supremacy" do not appear once in the 400-plus-page proposed budget document. The word "racism" appears just four times and discrimination twice. Grand Rapids is going to have to do something drastic to fix the hole left by income tax loss, as all the city commissioners, the city manager, and the mayor have talked about a lot this past few weeks when talking about the budget. And the way that the commissioners talk about lobbying the state and federal government to help, it sounds as though you are all prepared to take action to address what you consider to be an emergency. But those of us calling tonight are saying that, why are you not prepared to do something drastic to respond to the community demands for defunding? The white supremacist actions of our police force are a continued emergency. I'm asking that you vote no on the proposed 2022 budget. If you feel that you have no choice but to vote for this budget, then this isn't a participatory process, right? And that also means that you should not vote for it. As people have mentioned, other callers, you're giving $700,000 more to a department that this, just this past few months, slammed black people from Grand Rapids to the ground, punched black motorists, and in the past years, have terrorized our people so much that we've had, I think, the most in-the-streets protest that we've ever had, calling for change. The fact that you will not even address that in this budget, not even mention the idea of defunding, is something that you all have to deal with and realize that this is not a participatory budget. It should be voted again. And just because it is legal does not mean that it is just, and just because you feel it is legal does not mean that you are right and that we don't have recourse in the courts of law for this non-constitutional process. You're welcome for my voice to be included in this process. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Josh Wunder, and I'm a resident of Grand Rapids. I also have the honor to work at the Grand Rapids Chamber and represent thousands of member businesses, most of which are small businesses. I want to share our support for the proposed budget, which I believe strikes a balance between the necessary fiscal discipline to protect essential services from a very uncertain future and make strategic investments in pursuit of important community goals aligned with the city's strategic plan to improve measurable outcomes for all in our community. This includes millions for infrastructure, economic development, housing, equity objectives, homeless outreach, and much more that was detailed earlier tonight. I want to thank you all for your engagement over the entire budget process and city staff for their significant effort that went into preparing and presenting this budget. The Grand Rapids business community is extremely thankful to be nearing the end of this challenging period and for the partnership we've had with all of you over the last more than a year now. We believe our community is poised to thrive post-pandemic, and we have numerous catalytic opportunities ahead of us. We're really excited to be moving forward. We appreciate your focus on ensuring fiscal resilience and that everyone will benefit from our more prosperous future. And we think the budget makes significant strides for both of these goals. Again, I urge a yes vote, and I thank you for your consideration.
Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? Thank you. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Postmuth. I'm in Plainfield Township, and I'm a former GRPD officer. First of all, I've listened to all these callers that call in about defunding, and every statement they're making is based on cherry picking the situation, and it's based on emotion and not on fact. I'm going to address the punching the guy in the face. When you try to take an officer's weapon, you're going to get punched in the face because that just became a life-and-death situation. That's not fun. It's not funny, and it's not abuse. That's an officer trying to save their life and make sure that they go home at night to their family. The list of people, Ms. Gallegos said we sent her a letter stating over thousands of people are calling in to defund. Well, I found about 60 names on that list. Several of them are fictitious names, which just lets, it removes the credibility, for one thing. We're at about 230 officers. Our minimum staffing is 297. As the previous caller stated, our response times keep getting longer. Kirk Kimball started defunding the police. The budget's gone down. Officers are stressed. They've run from call to call. And why not talk about the positive things? How about a two-month-old baby that's still alive? Because my daughter and her partner were on the scene, and my daughter has eight years' paramedic experience. It's a fact that baby would not have survived if they would not have done that. How about talking about those things? How about talking about that our department, the department is accredited, and we have one of the best-trained departments in the country? Our officers are not out enacting horrific acts of violence as so many of these callers claim. And as far as defunding, my position is, if you guys wanted to fund and we lose another one of our officers, every one of you should be charged with accessory to murder. And every one of the people who put their name on that list should be charged with accessory to murder because you're making it unsafe for our officers out there. There are too many officers that we've lost. I don't know about you, but I've been to enough officer funerals. I don't want to go to another one, and I don't want to see our community lose an officer. I know these other people don't care, but the majority of this community really does care. So I would suggest, instead of reducing that budget, and Ms. Clarence never said what the dollar amount equates to that percentage from 38.6 to 35.8, how much dollars have we lost? People are complaining about $700,000. That's federal funding. Okay?
That's three minutes. Thank you, caller.
Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Brian, and I'm a Third Ward resident of the city of Grand Rapids. Even though the GRPD has continued to enact violence on our black and brown communities, it's being given 700,000 more dollars compared to last year. The non-elected city manager has co-opted the reimagining language when the budget fails to actually reimagine how to ensure all of our residents feel safe. The tactics the police department proposed have been tried before across this country, and history shows they do not work. Instead of talking statistics, platitudes, and falsehoods from decades ago, let's talk about the recent polling that shows that only 15% of white people said they have experienced discrimination or been treated unfairly based on their race, while 61% of black Americans and 39% of Latino people said they have. Just 46% of black adults express at least a fair amount of confidence that local police can gain trust. 61% of black Americans said they think local police treat people of color more harshly than white people. The proposed budget ignores this reality. It ignores history. It ignores the community's voice, and it does not reimagine safety, justice, or equity. Vote no on May 20th to adopt the proposed 2022 budget and provide a new proposal that actually defunds the police department and prioritizes community safety and justice in a way that legitimately engages the community and practices full transparency, inclusion, and accessibility. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Oh, can you please lower the volume on your device?
Hi, my name is Andrea. I live in the Third Ward of Grand Rapids. I'm calling to vote no on the GRPD proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. GRPD doesn't need an additional $700,000. The department at their minimum must be taken down to a 32% budget. The community and citizens of Grand Rapids continuously tell city officials what we need as a community, and we get ignored. We need to have more involvement in the building of our own community. After all, that is the democratic process. These helicopters, this riot gear, isn't what we should be spending money on. We need to be putting it into our schools, into affordable housing, more youth programs, and access to outpatient mental health services and medical clinics for low-income families. It feels like you are catering to a certain class of people while ignoring the majority living here in Grand Rapids. The recent videos I've seen The recent videos I've seen of officers punching Black people in the face, I don't even have the words for that. It makes me feel ashamed just for living here. There is no reason why routine traffic stops should ever lead to violence, and yet the department continues to do their own internal investigations once their actions are exposed. We need to actually see change take place. You continue to talk about church tyranny and trust between law enforcement and civilians, but your actions need a different picture. We don't need more policing. GRPD are using fear tactics to scare people into thinking these Operation Safe Neighborhood procedures are keeping us more safe, but in reality, they are ignoring what we really need as a community. We want to actually promote a community of care, which would result in real safety, not the harassment, racial profiling, and violence GRPD uses towards our Black and Brown people. We believe that if people have their needs met, that crime would be reduced, and we could take care of our own community. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thank you. I'm Grand Rapids business owner Johnny Brand, voice for the badge calling. The funding, just please look at the facts. It doesn't work. Other cities have had disasters when they, when they defund it trying to get police back. So please look at the facts. I think that's very important. We have 297 sworn-up mandate. We probably got about 240 now, and we'd fund them more, it'd be terrible for the entire city, which is what we have considered as far as the effects of it. As far as the need for the police, I mean, not just for officers, we also have PTSD. We should have the state-of-the-art. We should also be researching any type of equipment that would keep the police safer. So I mean, there's a need for the money for the police, for the good of the entire city. And also on the reform, PD reform, I mean, I think that'd be great. It gives our officers more clarity in the jobs and better for everybody involved. But I want to say this, too. We are not against the money that is needed for the inner city at all. I just believe that that money can be taken from the budget without the funding and the police to take, misallocating funds, in my opinion, to the department. But I want to tell you this, though. No city officials, none, including Brandon Davis, oversight of police and fire, were at the memorial honoring the fallen Bobby Kozminski, et cetera, et cetera. Nobody was there. And to me, that's deplorable. It really, truly is. And I don't mean to be disrespectful. I'm sure, say, boy, he said, well, I'll tell you what, that was wrong. It was terrible for the morale of our police. Brandon Davis, I thought his job was to establish a culture and to commend police. He's not even there representing the city in his job. It was really wrong to not be there. And I'd like to know why, and I'll tell you what, to me, there's not many excuses why. If it's planned, reschedule them. This happens every year. So I was really disappointed on that. And also, I do want to mention Commissioner Jones. He listens, even on the, even on the screen when I'm watching the commission meeting. He listens, and I respect Commissioner Jones for that. You can tell he's listening intently, he thinks about it, and then he answers. I have a lot of respect for Commissioner Jones in that regard. Also, last thing I want to say is, Commissioner Yasi, I don't know. I'm so sorry you've had terrible incidents. I really am, but you came into office, and we knew you weren't for the police. I mean, why? I mean, your experiences based your decision on the entire police force? It shouldn't be that way, and I hope that you consider it. Last thing is on opposition groups. We'd love to work with them. We're not, we're not against looking at the funding, getting different ways for the inner city. We agree with it. So there shouldn't be a debate, but I know there is, because if you don't like police, you don't like police. Anything we say is probably not going to help, but I wish it would because we want to build unity in the inner city, and to do that, we need to work together. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you. Good evening.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, Daniel. I'm Jim Perizzola. I've lived in all three wards. I believe my family's greater than 10 generations. I also believe we're the largest family. We number greater than 1,000. Today, I'm listening. Over the last few weeks, I went to the patriarchs of our family, the elders, and they support the police department. We trust in Nathaniel Moody and John O'Connor. It's Melinda Isasi. That misrepresents our Hispanic community, along with Joe Jones in our Second Ward. The first people to say defund, which I've never heard of that before, was Melinda Isasi and Joe Jones. Mayor Bliss, in the future, because of the changing of the guard, the way that we vote, I mean, you'll see how we'll vote Melinda Isasi off. She won't be a commissioner anymore. The worst people and the best people know we need to have rule of order and law. That's why we cannot completely defund the police. With that, I pass.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Suzanne, and I am a resident of the Second Ward in the city of Grand Rapids. I'm calling to urge the commission to vote no on the fiscal year 2022 budget. In the past year, thousands of people have expressed their desire to defund the police to the charter-mandated minimum of 32%, and although they are receiving a lower percentage of the budget, they are still receiving $700,000 more than they did last year. The GRPD does not need more money. The amount of resources they were able to put toward a group of people on the sidewalk peacefully exercising their First Amendment right on Friday was not indicative of an underfunded police department. The fact that Sunday, they had six police cruisers with nothing better to do than come and hold the vice president and youth director of Justice for Black Lives at gunpoint over a stupid fight that was over before they arrived was not indicative of an underfunded police department. The safest parts of this city are not the ones with the most police, but the ones with the most resources. We need to defund the GRPD and refund the communities that need it most. This budget needs to be scrapped and needs to utilize participatory budgeting. Let the people who are paying their hard-earned money a chance to contribute and not just three minutes to speak at rather than converse with the city commission. The city claims to be considering input from stakeholders, but in reality, they are only listening to institutions and commercial property and business owners, not residents. Once this budget is set, we need an accessible and transparent budget available to the citizens. I mentioned this at the last meeting, and Mark Washington's reply was that the whole budget was available. That's true. The 438-page budget was available, but that does not make it accessible. The GRPD does not need time to transform itself, as was stated in the committee of the whole meeting earlier today. Time's up. The citizens need more resources to help itself in ways that a violent, racist police force will never be able to. I yield the rest of my time.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
My name is Deborah Jandal, and I live in Grand Rapids. I have lived in Grand Rapids for 24 years, and I am calling to support defund the GRPD's demands about the proposed budget for 2022. At 438 pages, it is neither accessible nor easy to read, and the review timeline is far too short for the meaningful engagement from the wider community. GRPD, who has enacted horrific violence on Black and Brown communities all last year, including punching motorists and slamming activists to the ground, is being given $700,000 more dollars than they were last year. This is the willful denial of the thousands of voices that have called for defunding the GRPD over the last 12 months. Meanwhile, programs like the Grand Rapids Public Library and Cure Violence are given a tiny fraction of the amount of the GRPD budget. This is unacceptable. You must vote no to adopting the budget. We must restart the process with true participatory budgeting and community engagement. To do anything less is unjust and continues Grand Rapids' legacy as being one of the worst cities in the nation for Black and Brown folks to live. We demand that the city commission vote no on the budget. We demand that a new proposal for the 2022 budget that defunds the police department and prioritizes community safety and justice. This includes defunding the Grand Rapids Police Department to the charter-mandated 32% of the city's budget, engaging in a participatory process where community members can decide where and how our tax dollars are being used, and investing more dollars in the Cure Violence program. All funds used for Cure Violence should come directly from the Grand Rapids Police Department budget. And I can say personally, I have owned my home for 24 years, and I am tired of paying taxes to have the police run around acting like criminals and assaulting citizens, and there is no consequences whatsoever. This has got to end. The citizens are not going to put up with this. We have had it. This is not fair. It's not right, and we are calling timeout. This is not going to happen anymore. People are afraid to even go outside. They're terrified when they get pulled over by the police, and anything they do is looked at as a crime. This is not right. You know it's not right. Each and every one of you on that city commission knows that it is not right.
That's three minutes, caller. Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Charlie. I'm from Grand Rapids. So I just want to echo a lot of what the other people have been saying regarding to the budget. It's just, I don't understand how a year of activism does not garner results. And so I really want to emphasize the demands that all the other people have called in to demand this budget be redone or made again. There's a couple of things I also want to remind the city commission of, including the mayor and the city manager. Next month is Pride Month, and in marginalized communities, when we stand up for one person or one group, we're standing up for every group. We're standing up for Indigenous people. We're standing up for non-Indigenous people of color. We're standing up for LGBT people and immigrants and sex workers and everybody. So what I just want to remind the city commission of is that the people who are calling in opposing the defunding of police, most of them are people from the dominant, you know, groups and power and social structures and power. Most of them have never experienced a day of marginalization in their lives to where they would come and, like, need to come to the conclusion that the police do not protect us. Because all of us who have called in agree that the police do not protect us, and all of us are part of marginalized groups or oppressed groups in some way. So to me, that the city even has a pride that they celebrate suggests that you care at least somewhat about marginalized communities. And like, we're not business owners. We're not Brand who just called in a minute ago, who, again, has never experienced a day of marginal, true marginalization in his life. Some of these people are not even from Grand Rapids. So like, we live here, we see the police, we experience the police, and we've been out here for a year. We need to see the change, and, you know, if this budget goes through, it's a pretty clear message that we would have no reason to feel cared for. And so just vote no on this budget if you care about marginalized communities and not just about the business class, not just about bringing in tourism and money into the city. You care about the people who live here. Please vote no on this budget, and if you don't, then...
That's three minutes, caller. Caller, you have three minutes with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Dana Montgomery, and I'm a resident of Grand Rapids, the Second Ward. I'm calling today in support of the defund the GRPD's coalition demands of the city commission to vote no on the fiscal year 2022 budget and to restart the budget process over with participatory budgeting. I'm not going to reiterate the point of hundreds of other residents because I know you won't listen, so I'm just going to talk to my city officials directly. Commissioner Lanier, I'm going to start with you because I've actually appreciated how you've engaged with the community around the issue of defunding the police. I don't agree with all of your politics, but you've made sure to actually address the community's concerns, which is more than most of your colleagues can say. Thank you. O'Connor, you're not even worth my time. Keep taking money from the GRPOA and being a bootlicker, but we're coming for your seat. Rappert, you can keep being wishy-washy and playing both sides since your reelection is coming up, but rest assured, we'll remember your lack of clear support when it's time to decide whether to reelect you. Moody, you claim to care about the Third Ward, but you have not only allowed but encouraged your residents to be brutalized, surveilled, traumatized, and overpoliced. Their blood is on your hands. Commissioner Jones, you co-opt the words of community organizers and activists in your speeches, but you have failed to turn those words into action. Careful how you engage. We know you're eyeballing the mayor's seat, but remember, we're the ones who have to elect you. Commissioner Isasi, I expected better from you. I know what happened in July was rough for you, but that is not an excuse to ignore the community's cry. Please do better. Mark Washington and Mayor Bliss, I have some special words for you. Mark Washington, you have come into our city and caused nothing but violence. You have displaced our unhoused community, issued thinly veiled threats towards our city commissioners, supported the GRPD as they have brutalized Black and Brown residents, all while taking a lofty salary of well over six figures. You say that no one has reached out to you about amending the budget, but many of our community members have reached out to you. So are we no one to you? Mayor Bliss, I'm disgusted to be in the same field of social work as you. You pretend to care about the community's concerns, but have shown to care more about scooters, social zones, and anything that uplifts the privilege and lines your pocket. You all, our city officials, have an opportunity here to not just talk about it, but to be about it. Instead of caring about the opinions of institutions, engage with the community. Almost none of my friends in Grand Rapids even knew the budget was being voted on this week until our group let them know. Regardless of your opinion or what you say you have done, there are community members telling you that you have not meaningfully engaged with them, and you are deliberately ignoring that. This is your job, and if you can't do that, then you need to go. Vote no on the city's budget and defund the GRPD to the 32% so the community can begin to heal from all the harm that you have done. Thank you. I yield my time.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Con. I live in Grand Rapids. I just wanted to echo a lot of my colleagues saying that I would like for the commission to vote no on the proposed budget, and I'll keep it short. I just want to say that no amount of money that the police get will make them social workers, will make them capable of addressing houselessness, will make them able to address food insecurity. We need to fund the community, and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Donnie. I am a, I am a Grand Rapids resident, been here for 28 years. I'm also the VP of Justice for Black Lives. I'm calling for the 2021 fiscal year budget of 2022 fiscal year budget for the city's budget. I'm calling to vote no in support of defunding the GRPD. I'm saying this, and here's why. GRPD has endlessly showed how they are abusing, not only just abuse of power, but also their portion of the budget. It's $56.4 million that they use and that they have gotten, and that number is only is only suspected to go up. In order to do what, is my question? If the, if the property damage is going up, if crime is going up, somebody please tell me how the cost of the housing is going up. So how is it, how is it, if the crime is going up and property damage is going up, it's a better, it's supposedly better to live here? So who's it better to live here for? What, how are we making it, who are we making it better to live here for? Who are we trying to adhere to in this moment? Because the community keeps calling in and demonstrating their problems with the resources and the non-reallocating of GRPD's budget. We are demanding the defunding of GRPD to a chart mandated thirty-two and a half percent. That money can be used for multiple things in the Third Ward and other communities of poverty. Also, I'm also calling to speak on the matter that activists have been targeted personally for organizing events because like I said earlier, there have been more events and protests in the city than there has ever been in the history that I've been alive, twenty-eight years. I have never seen so many events and been a participant in coordinating those events and also been targeted by GRPD for well over a year now. So I would appreciate it if we could reallocate these funds to better protect the community so that our community, the Third Ward, can stop fighting over resources. Because people do not have what they need in order to survive. They can't eat because guess what? It's too expensive in order to eat. And they can't drink because guess what? We have lead in the water that we keep getting notifications from the city. I get stuff in the mail from the city saying how you should heat up your water due to lead situation.
That's three minutes, caller. Thank you. That's three minutes. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Heather and I reside in Grand Rapids. I'm just calling to support the funding of GRPD. Defunding does not work, and it hasn't worked. I encourage commissioners to actually look at New York. We cannot base funding off twenty community members reacting off emotion. It's ironic that I continue hearing members of our communities saying, "We will take care of each other." Where are you? Where are you when children are being shot at or when houses are being shot at? The only ones I see running toward gunshots are officers. The only ones I see continually showing up are officers. You want to see change, go to the academy and be that change. Fund GRPD, fund the training for our officers, fund them for programs to engage in the community. I yield my time.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now. Hello, caller. Caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Kathy. I am a Third Ward resident. And I was just calling to express disappointment in the lack of community engagement with regards to the budget proposal and any type of announcement of when folks can be engaged. If we are to be a quote welcoming city, not just having murals stating that. I think we need to have the folks that live here feel welcomed in their own communities and the assets in their communities. So I just really want to scrap this budget in order to have some community engagement authentically and not just some last-minute updates on Facebook stating that there's an opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Callan. I live in Grand Rapids. I'm asking you today to please vote no on the proposed budget until I'll be non-business community to have an input on. Think about the ideals that made you want to be your representative in the first place. You wanted to change things and you wanted to really make a difference in everybody's lives while also being an integral part of how the city presents itself and how it works. Now, going back to reality, most likely you would agree that things have played out differently than you thought it would be like. That happens all the time. Well, now you are being presented with an actual thing that you can do to make a difference in the people you represent. This is one of those moments in which you would actually have the ability to be known by people as a person that listens to them, not a person that despises them like some callers, such as Mr. Brand. Mr. Brand is calling in and expressing discontent without cities running the city. But how often do you think that he's affected by the police negatively as other citizens of the community are? Support for the budget as it is would be catering to those interests because those are the only people who have called in to support today. Businesses and capitalists are very happy with how the budget is being presented because they know that there's nothing truly different about it. So I just want to end with saying that like when you don't include people who are ready and willing to give input into the process, that will be affecting them personally. Then you really need to think about whether you are representative of people, whether you are representative of those who are trying, or whether you are representative of those who are trying to get money from those people. And I give it up. My time.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
My name is Aurora. I live southeast side of Michigan. I'm six and I'm calling to say that defund the police and why do the police always have to go for our black friends and our black family? And yeah.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Elsha. I live in Grand Rapids in the Second Ward. I'm calling along with many others that have already called to ask that you vote no on the proposed city budget for 2022. A lot of people have been calling in asking that you not defund the police as though that is even up for discussion by you right now. There seems to be confusion. This is for a seven hundred thousand dollar increase for GRPD. And this is after months of protesting and action that I have never seen on this scale in the city. Asking that the police department be defunded and asking that these Rescue Plan Act funds go towards things other than things like ShotSpotter and things like, you know, Cure Violence for the police department. I'm also, I don't understand why there's so many people calling, people call from outside of Grand Rapids or from the suburbs. And I'm not really interested in their opinions. Like if they need some context. For instance, at the main library downtown, which is a place that often has patrons of the most vulnerable populations of Grand Rapids. They try as much as possible to not call the police. And actually, when any scenario has arise where they have made that decision, the person who makes that call hopes that it is one person, one woman, and an entire department. And that's just absolutely astounding to me that we are off, like it's even being proposed to give that department seven hundred thousand more dollars. There are so many other places that could be going. I also don't understand why things like these violence reduction and additional co-response funding is being pushed even further down the road. It seems like a political tactic right now to say that you're going to talk about it in the summertime. People are calling now and they want to be talking about it right now and not just like continue to be pushed on, oh, we're not talking about this. We're not talking about this. We want to talk about this now. We want to talk about where these funds are going and we want to talk about defunding the police. And frankly, the people that are calling in are the future of this city. And, you know, maybe you won't be voted out now, but in a very short number of years, like these are the people that are going to be, you know, paying your salaries. And if you're going to keep voting for things that they don't want, like continued increases in the police budget, you're no longer going to have a job. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Is there a device on with the meeting? If you could lower that. Thank you. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is John. I live in the Third Ward. I'm calling to vote no on the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2022. Start the process over. At this time, we'll participate budgeting by the community. It is not acceptable that the GRPD to be receiving over seven hundred thousand more money, more dollars just to do what? If the crime rate is going up, I'm not understanding why they need more money if they're not doing their job successfully. They are abusing, as far as I'm concerned, they are abusing the hard-earned tax dollars that this community is going. They're putting their money into, they're working very hard in order to make these nice buildings go up. And I would very much appreciate it if we could reallocate that money into the community and use it for better uses than they did last year, when they have spent a year punching black lawyers and slamming black activists into the sidewalk. I'm not understanding why the activist situation is even a question. I'm not understanding why if people are demonstrating their First Amendment right and their Second Amendment right and doing it in a reasonable fashion, I'm not exactly sure why people are being collected, especially our black leadership is being collected, arrested, and tried for trumped-up charges. I'm not exactly sure why we're wasting our time on policing our activists instead of actually policing connected community as you say you do. I'm not exactly sure why we're spending more money on something that isn't for the community. It is only built for a section of the community, the demographic of the community. Go ahead and say it, for white people, for white people to feel more safe. I'm not exactly sure why we are tempting only a certain part of the community when it's been perfectly demonstrated that the community is calling in and they're saying what they want. We are seeing what we want and we will get what we want. And my call today here is to defund the GRPD. It's a vote yes, a vote no on the proposed budget for the fiscal year of 2022. It's a defund GRPD to a mandated chart of thirty-two and a half percent. I yield my time. Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes begins now.
My name is Super Diver and I am a representative. However, I do work in the city of Grand Rapids. I have about thirty-four years. I have to be honest, I am so tired of hearing this discussion over and over and over. And I'm sure you have braved through an active shooter situation, do not ever criticize our community. On New Year's Eve, several years ago, a gunman walked into a nightstop and opened fire. A manager was shot in the neck. A customer was shot twice in the abdomen. And people were running out the door, hundred and fifty, two hundred people all at once. And who came to our rescue? Who ran through those hundreds of people to put an end to a very violent situation? It was our police officers. No question. They did their job. Defund the police. People, you're crazy. You need more police and we need them now. Thank you. I yield my time.
Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? Hello, caller. Hi. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now. Hello, caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Nida and I live in Grand Rapids. I'm sure if I could vote, I would vote to defund the police. Yeah, a lot of money of them I could be giving to schools like DRPS because I see they need money. I see an insane amount of police officers in my area. I don't see why it takes so many police officers to pull over one black person, but they don't do that. I yield my time. Thank you.
That was the final caller, mayor.
Thanks, Daniel. All right, commissioners, we'll close the opportunity for public comment and that will be referred back to our next meeting. And next, I'll open up our second scheduled public hearing tonight. And that is a public hearing. This is where we are, our body, the city commission. We listen to appeals from individuals who wish to appeal the Uptown Business Improvement District Special Assessment Role 8758. So let's see. Oh, there's Paula. So I'll turn to Paula to give us a little background on this item and then we will open up to anyone who wishes to be heard. And again, this is specific to people who are requesting an appeal for the Uptown Bid Special Assessment. Paula?
Thank you, mayor. At the request of the Uptown Business Improvement District, the assessor's office has prepared the Special Assessment Role 8758 in accordance with the Business Improvement District's plan. This plan was adopted back January seventeenth, that's 2019. And the commission determined to extend this plan another year. So it's the same plan and they're at your meeting back in March. The assessor's office notified property owners in the district on April fifteenth and let them know the charge and the appeal process. We've had the assessment role open for the minimum of at least two weeks, starting back in April fifteenth and continuing through today. We've also put the Special Assessment Role on the city website. The assessor's office has received an appeal for forty-six separate parcels from one property owner. It's a condominium as of today. So tonight is the city commission convenes as the board review to hear appeals. And tonight is also the final opportunity to file an appeal of the special assessment. The city assessor and city attorney will review all appeals and make a recommendation at the June fifteenth meeting of the city commission. And if confirmed, the assessment will be invoiced July first with the summer property tax statement. So I will mute myself and listen for the appeals. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Appreciate that. All right, so Daniel, do we have anyone who wishes to be heard on this Special Assessment Role appeal?
We have one caller currently in the queue. Here she appeared to come. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
My name is Lindsay Christian and I live in the city of Grand Rapids. Born and raised here and send my kids to St. Anthony's and West Catholic and have been in the community and went to West Catholic myself. The one thing I feel most strongly about with all the tax dollars I pay and continue to support this community with is the need to have the budget approved for the services of our police officers.
Daniel, I muted you. Can you explain to the caller what this item is?
Thanks, city clerk. And I'll repeat it one more time. So this is an opportunity for anyone who is a part of the Special Assessment Role for the Uptown Business Improvement District. If they want to file an appeal on that special assessment, now is the time that you can speak.
Put my approval in for passing the budget for...
That was the previous, that was the previous public comment portion. If you'd like to call back and discuss that, you can dial three one one, press option one and then option five. This is for anyone that's... That was the previous, that was the previous public comment portion. If you'd like to call back and discuss that, you can dial 311, press option one and then option five. This is for anyone that's...
That's what I just did, and I've been second in queue, and I've been on the line for now thirty, thirty-one minutes.
This is the, this is the third portion for public...
I hit 311 and I hit one. I will email.
But this is, this is for a Special Assessment District for our Uptown Business Association, or Business Improvement District. So unless you've been assessed a special assessment by our income tax department, then this is the, this is...
Okay, I will try again. That's what I just did. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There are no callers in the queue if I'm muted.
All right, thanks, Daniel. This will be referred back to our Committee Develop, Community Development Committee, and so I'll go ahead and close that scheduled public hearing. So Commissioners, that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment. As Daniel said, this is for any other items. You can call 456-3000 or 311, hit number one and then number five, and I'll turn it to Daniel for those in the queue. Am I frozen? No, can you...
And first and foremost, I wanted to say I empathize, and my heart, like so many on this call, is heavy tonight. I want to thank and say regardless of what position you took tonight on the budget process, it is so good to hear and know that we have so many passionate, committed, educated, and focused bridge builders from all zip codes and affiliations and backgrounds on the call tonight, all who care about our city. Commissioners, Mayor Bliss, City Manager Mark Washington, I want to say thank you. I recognize your servant leadership, and while there are things I do not agree with and have disappointed myself along with others, I respect that you're dealing with bringing together a budget that has multi-layered and over 190,000 residents in Grand Rapids' safety, mental, physical, economic, educational, jobs, generational wealth building opportunities to account for and think about in an equitable way, which is why I do not support defunding police. I support bridge building and investing in economic development resources, people, business, and most definitely our third ward. This month is Mental Health Awareness Month. CTSE affects 15% of our police and law enforcement and 3% of people across the country. We all hurt. And to hear so much focus on blame games and insults tonight, so much anger and focus on defunding or not funding or what funding, if we put that same energy into rebuilding and making time to focus in on that, what could we accomplish? What we have here is not a funding problem in terms of police being overfunded. In fact, they're underfunded. What we have is a problem, which is the southeast side, third ward of our city, has been historically underfunded, which has caused anger, hopelessness, and the thought that the solution comes in taking that power and money from villainizing police departments, which is far from the truth. The GRPD is not the enemy. The GRPD is made up of moms, dads, humans, brothers and sisters who want to help you. But because of lack of funding and resources, crime is hired, and as a result, there's more negative interactions. And we need to change that by funding the ward. This is not a GRPD problem. This is a funding resource problem. I want to know, how are we working with private equity and nonprofit partners? How are we learning and growing more ideas like those led by the Community Transformation Center? How are we, as a community, rallying and focused on communication, fund development, and building these initiatives with private, public, and nonprofit partners? I believe in addition to a funding problem, we have a communication problem, but we have the talent to help. The communication budget, so let's talk. Tonight, there was $545 million total in our budget. Fifty-five million, less than 10% goes to our GRPD.
Three minutes, caller. Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your three minutes starts now.
Hello again, Daniel. First of all, I want to say I appreciate this time, and whether I spoke on one of you or all of you in a positive or in a negative light, I want you all to know that I appreciate each and every one of you. Most recently, I've heard on the news that hundreds of thousands of dollars are given to the Office of Oversight for a special group of people to help police our communities, and that's to balance our livelihood. I guess that people in Grand Rapids are living 20 years longer. I find that very, very stimulating, and we need to figure out, is everybody in Grand Rapids living less, not just because of the color of their skin, is it because of our environment? Somebody else has called in a while back, is a business owner on Leonard Street, and he spoke on Brandon Davis. It's something to do with the Officer Kaminsky. I believe his name is on Camerac Street. What I would say to you guys and to Brandon Davis is look at the pictures of the wall and that business of all those police officers and all those banners that he fought to leave up. They're all white people. He doesn't honor black police officers or Hispanic police officers. This is very important. He can say whatever he wants to say, but this is what white supremacists does. They hire Mexicans and blacks to work for them and pay them at the lowest wage, but yet they only honor people that are the color of their skin. Good job, Brandon Davis.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
My name is Lindsay Christian, and I live in the city of Grand Rapids and have my whole life. I send my kids to St. Anthony's and West Catholic, and I myself went to West Catholic and have been doing nothing but support this local community, and I pay lots in taxes, and the last thing I want to see is to not approve the budget for the police services. That is the number one priority that our city needs to keep our children and our families and our neighborhoods safe.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Mark, right in Grand Rapids. Look, I don't, I heard all this, I heard all this about defunding the police. No, I didn't hear a lot about that. I'm into more reading and seeking out bad people in the department. You cannot have individuals running around the streets, patrolling, you see, trying to patrol the streets, probably, you know, making corner hits all the time. That's the reason why a weed and sheet has to be, has to be placed. You got to get rid of bad cops. Anybody in there wanting to write up, you got to get rid of them. Because we can't have situations like a dead shoulder. You have 20 plus write-ups. Can't have that. A guy from Florida, eighty write-ups, can't have that. The guy who dropped off a bomb and killed transcrucers, two felony domestic violence convictions, that should have been on the force to begin with. Those are some people you have to get rid of. And the hiring process has to be, has to be people who live in the, in the city and in the community, not in the suburbs where they don't, where they're just going in, going in, do a job, they go home, they're in risky neighborhoods and everything else. No, uh-uh. They have, they have to come, they have to be from the city where people in the community know them and trust them. That's it. That's it. You can't have this stuff no more. Can't have it no more. Thank you very much.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Casey Thompson. I live in the third ward of Grand Rapids, and I'm the U.S. Director for Justice for Black Lives. I'm calling to vote no on the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2022. I would like to start the process over this time with participatory budgeting by the community. It is not acceptable that GRPD is receiving $700,000 more than they did last year, when they have spent the year punching black motorists and slamming black activists to the sidewalks. The city has bragged about listening to community stakeholders around the budget, but these stakeholders are just institutions like, intuitions, excuse me, like link, property, and business owners, and not individual residents of Grand Rapids. I would like to see GRPD defunded to the mandated 32% of the city budget's pay and use that pay for clear violence out of the police budget. The GRPD has been traveling, has been targeting the Vice President of Justice for Black Lives for almost a year. We do not want our tax dollars used for the aggression towards black activists and leaders. I would like to see the participatory budgeting, and it has been proven to be effective in cities like New York and Oakland. I would also like to see the police provide their own insurance. If police provided their own liability insurance, it would release a lot of money in tax dollars that we're using to pay off their accidental murders and incidents of our black and brown community members, and it would also hold those officials accountable and give us a log that is public for repeat police brutality. Again, I would like to see GRPD defunded, and I would like to see them provide their own liability insurance so taxpayers are not paying for their, for the police's murders and aggression, and so that there is a log of accountability outside of their own hands. Thank you.
That was the final caller, Mayor.
Thank you, Daniel. Sorry, coughing a little bit tonight. I'll now turn to, I'll close that public comment period, and I will turn to my colleagues on the Commission, and I'll just go around my screen. So I'll start with Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks so much for all who called in on this evening. I want to give a recognition, give special recognition to, again, the, the work that was done throughout the course of this year in preparation for the budget to staff. I also want to, again, say thank you to all the folks who called in, those with varying opinions, whether for or against funding for the police, and it is my, my hope that we can get to a better place beyond today, and am looking forward to having the time to vote on the budget on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner O'Connor? Did you shake your head? Commissioner Linier?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank everyone for the comments that were made this evening, and, and those that had specific ideas of what they would like to see in the budget. Those ideas are appreciated, and to that end, good night.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Rappert?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank people for taking time to call in and send us emails and let us know how they feel about what's in front of us, and it's, it's a lot to take in, but it's greatly appreciated, and that's really all I have to say. Looking forward to Thursday as well to, to finalize our conversation about the budget.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No comment.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Isasi?
Thanks, Mayor. I want to just extend my thanks again to certainly all the staff that went into the preparation of the budget. City Manager talked about that earlier, and especially all those folks on our, and the fiscal services that work with Ms. Clarence. So I know there's a number of people there. I just wanted to say thank you for that work. You know, thanks again for calling in tonight. I think that, you know, the desire would be to be having these conversations face to face and in chambers and being able to see people, and, you know, oftentimes there'd be a little bit before and a little bit after in some other conversations that might have, happen out in community. This is, this is our second time doing this budget in this virtual format with limited, with limited interaction that would probably have normally happened. So with that being said, I think, you know, we, we had a number of comments today. We've had the presentations reminding individuals that this is, Thursday will be the vote, and then also that we are looking forward to a, a post-budget process and to, and to follow along with that and to follow along with those conversations and those investments that are outlined, and I hope everyone stays safe and have a good evening.
Thanks, Commissioner, and I too look forward to being back in the chambers. Let me turn to my appointed officials. City Clerk?
I'm just, good day today. Thank you to, for the support of the city and everything for a great conference last week for the International Issue Municipal Clerks. We had about 487 clerks meet safely, physically distanced in Vaneal Arena and various other places, and I'm very happy with the hospitality. We heard, I heard from several conference goers about their experience here in Grand Rapids. So that was five years in the works, started before I got here, and so last time we had you here was 30 years, so 30 years from now, some other clerk can take care of it. So, but it was great to have the first, first major conference here to work in a safe manner, and, and was enjoyed by all the participants. Sorry to all my fellow city staffers who needed to go to Big B Coffee or Starbucks in those convention years. I think we got used to not having that, so it's good to see our place is busy during lunches and dinners. That's it for me.
Thanks, City Clerk. Phil, you want to add anything? Our city attorney?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Nothing from the Department of Law.
Okay, appreciate it. Our city attorney had to leave just a little bit ago, so thank you, Phil, for stepping in. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners and staff for, for your time today. Lots of, lots of good feedback during the public hearing, and, and as I was listening, I, I wanted to write some commentary on the term I heard quite a bit, participatory budgeting. And I appreciate the callers who were referencing other communities like Sacramento and Oakland and New York. And participatory budgeting is a process where community members get to participate in really direct funding towards special projects in their communities or neighborhoods. But I will note that those communities that were mentioned, Sacramento, the amount allocated participatory budgeted, $1 million. Durham, there's another community that did about $2 million. Oakland, California, $785,000. New York, $1 million. What I've outlined in the proposed budget is a process that would allow the city of Grand Rapids, who is not as large as some of those other communities, to have about $2 million to utilize, if this commission, shoot, this is all based on the preferences of the commission in a participatory way, post-budget adoption process. We also have other citizen engage processes that really determine funding, our funding recommendations specifically on Mobile GR, Vital Streets, Stormwater Oversight Commission, and we, we shared some of those earlier. But I just wanted to talk about scalability and realistically, there is no city, no mid-sized urban city that turns over the entire budget in which there are bond requirements, there are debt obligations, contractual obligations for the entire community. There's no government that, the state doesn't do it, the county doesn't do it, federal government surely doesn't do it. But there are ways to engage community members in the budgeting process, and I think this budget has done that prior to the post-budget adoption process, and we are even willing to do it even more. And we have said that this will be discussions that we'll have right after the budget's adopted, beginning in the first meeting in June. So I just wanted to share that for awareness of how this concept is used and to let members of the public know. we are not far from that practice in terms of, uh, both what we have done and what's proposed in the budget. So, uh, thank you, Mayor, and have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, good information that will continue to work through our channels to get out to the community. Um, I want to appreciate everyone, uh, for all your work today. Uh, appreciate those who called in. Uh, as many of you have said before, we get a lot of feedback from the community, uh, not just during this commission meeting. Uh, we get lots of phone calls and emails and we have conversations, uh, through a number of networks as we do our best to serve our entire community. And so appreciate those who called in. Um, you know, I said this during the Budget Town Hall, we don't always agree. Uh, just because, uh, we may not, or I personally may not, uh, agree with a recommendation that is being made doesn't mean that you're not heard. Uh, I assure you that we hear you. Uh, we take all the feedback that we get. Uh, I listen and, uh, we do our best to make sure that we're making, uh, decisions that we believe are in the best interest of the community and aligned with a number of our priorities. So thank you, everyone, for your continued work and service. I really appreciate all of you and have a good night.